I'm Lucy Kimpf. I'm the Executive Director of Metro Planning. Thank you so much for having me here today. It's an honor to serve the Planning Commission and the people of Nashville. Thank you, Chairwoman, for holding the hearing. I'm joined by Angie Hubbard, who is Director of the Housing Program, as well as George Rooker, who oversees our operations and keeps us all in line. Brett Weathers is in the back, whom you know as a Council Liaison. Lisa Milligan, who heads up our Regulatory Section and is before you every several weeks at your meetings. Rochelle Albright, our Chief of Staff, and Randy Semrick, who handles HR and also helps keep the trains running on time. So I'm here to present our fiscal 2026 budget. And I thought it would be helpful to introduce ourselves organizationally because we've changed a lot over the last 10 years, and I think in some important ways that had been helpful with the support of this body. We'll quickly review our 25 accomplishments. I wanted to devote a particular block of time to housing because I know that's a critical need and goal in our city. And so I look forward to hearing from Angie. And then I want to give you a glimpse, looking ahead, at our department program. And so, organizationally, over the last 10 years or so, we have worked to evolve the department from sort of a regulatory focus to one that can do quite a bit of advanced planning and research and look ahead. And again, I want to acknowledge the leadership of this body, as well as the Mayor's Office, in helping us to evolve because I think a healthy planning office can plan at every scale of development, from a site plan to the broader strategic objectives that we need to have as a city around climate resiliency, sustainability, economic resiliency, growth and planning, et cetera, on our corridors and the like. And so you see that evolution here. We have an advanced planning and research team that functions with our community planning work, data analysis, and the like. We have the regulatory sections. We've invested in a design studio that focuses not only on the built environment, but also environmental and landscape standards because we know that a well-designed city is a healthy city that has trees and great landscape standards. We have the Housing Section and then our operational teams. And then we've started a new section last year called Real Property Planning, which I'll talk about in a moment. But again, all of this is meant to create a much broader platform for the city to think about growth management in the future. And our Design Studio, this is alphabetical order. So our Design Studio, just quickly, they focus on design guidelines, not just downtown, but elsewhere in the county. We recently changed our Bonus Height Program, which allows us to think more critically about incentivizing the type of development that we want, including the state-enabled legislation around attainable housing. Will be our next focus there. But this is about creating high-quality open space, certain design standards. And then we've also updated the Downtown Code to account for the East Bank vision. Want to thank this body. And so those were some key activities in '25 there. Land Development Section, in some ways, are sort of the front face of the department that you see at the Planning Commission meeting. They reviewed about 3,000 applications and inspections in 2024. There are customer service wing, which we know is important, and this body has invested in those positions. Our long-range planning team, as I mentioned, is really meant to be more proactive, and they think more at a sector level and sometimes at a county-wide scale. They're engaged in a lot of different activities right now, from the multimodal master planning work to work down in Kane Ridge. And so they can really work at a lot of different scales, which we think is important in a county that is characterized by such a diversity of land types, from rural and suburban to urban. And so it excites us to be able to think through all of those different scales. We have a project management team now that helps ensure that if there are gaps in our knowledge base on something, they can connect us to a consultant team. Sometimes we'll do that on an economic front. For example, when we did the market analysis. And so we want to make sure that we're really rounding out the knowledge base for our work. And again, they are the ones who help us think at different scales within the city. And then finally, our Advanced Planning and Research Team. This is the team right now that's focused on housing and infrastructure. We've briefed this body several times on that. And so far, we've hosted a lot of different engagements around that. We're looking forward to coming back to you in June with our first set of recommendations and including potential legislation for your consideration. So we know that that's an important effort. So in 2024, Mayor O'Connell issued an executive order that set forth a special projects process, sort of understanding that a lot of work is interdisciplinary and the way that we need to be thinking about metro-owned land and other development in the city needs to be interdisciplinary. And so with that, this team is building that program to play a key role in how our metro-owned property needs to be planned for. And that includes things like public-private partnerships, such as housing opportunities or planning for metros' needs. And so I would say this is a program that we're building and we're still working towards what that looks like in the years to come. But we've been really excited about this, and I'm pleased with the partnership at General Services, Metro Legal, and of course, the Mayor's Office, helping us to think that through strategically. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Director Hubbard to talk a little bit more about the Housing Division.
Thank you, Lucy, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about housing. I could stay here all night and talk about housing, but I'll be cognizant of your time and the folks next in line. But you know, some of our highlights, of course, is the continued investment of the Barnes Fund. And we're so grateful to this body for the appropriations over the past 11 years. We're at a portfolio approaching now, combined with operating funds, with ARPA, with surplus funding, nearing $180 million. We've already awarded over $150 million to projects to fund nearly 6,000 or preserve 6,000 affordable homes across Nashville. We were successful in our Pro Housing Grant for $5 million, and that's going to allow us to create a faith-based development initiative where we can partner, help connect faith institutions who have land to develop with affordable housing developers, as well as create an Affordable Housing Accelerator Program. We do have a lot of emerging and small developers who are going through some great training programs in the city, but they don't have that. They're missing that bridge to connect them to the next-level capital. And so that's what this accelerator program is designed to do. And then we also have some funding to create permanent supportive housing. We are the first, in the first cohort of funds. And so far, these funds are still going to be available. Next slide, sorry. You may have heard that we released the Unified Housing Strategy a couple of weeks ago. So we're super excited about that. And that is our city's roadmap on how to address housing challenges through the housing spectrum, especially from our unhoused population to that affordable homeownership space and everywhere in between. But we do also acknowledge the role the market plays in this. Greg Claxton really picks that up in his Housing and Infrastructure Program. But this was the deepest analysis and most comprehensive analysis we've ever done as a city on our housing challenges. And it also looked at all the tools that we have, how well they're performing, and what tools we need to bring to our ecosystem, how all of our partners are performing, and where we need to create more partnerships. Big takeaways from there. And I'm so grateful to Chair Gamble and to Vice Mayor Henderson for allowing me to come on Monday night for a presentation on the Unified Housing Strategy so we can get, really dive in and get into the details. But just wanted to elevate here. There are seven strategies, over 40 actions. And so it comes down to what do we prioritize each year in the city? This was developed with a lot of engagement throughout the community. We have an engagement process open right now for feedback. You can see on the screen what those different meetings and conversations look like. This is meant to be a living document to respond to market conditions from year to year so that as we come back to every budget, it is informed by what is happening, what we're hearing from the community, what we should be prioritizing through funding and policy changes. Next slide. So with that, as I mentioned, there are over 40 actions. And I heard someone say at an event yesterday about our Unified Housing Strategy. Everything's urgent, but we can't have it all be priorities. And that's true because we have limited funding, but we have limited capacity. And we have to focus so that we can really be intentional about what we're doing. And so the Year One Priorities are focused on creating housing options for our unhoused and vulnerable persons. And that, we can't move the needle on homelessness if we are not intentional about how we're doing it. Our existing tools have performed well. The Barnes Fund's very impactful. But it's not getting us to that permanent supportive housing space without some real other supports or any of the other tools that come into our ecosystem through tax credits or federal funds. The other key thing is keeping people in their homes. It's a very uncertain time. If people lose their housing, it's compounding the housing issues that we have. It's traumatic for the families. And so these Year One Priorities are focused on that. It's focused on optimizing our existing tools to maximize its impact. There are some robust discussions about tweaks and reforms that we need to make to existing tools so that they're performing optimally, and we're getting the most out of Metro's investment, and then expanding our local capacity. So with that, I'm going to share, we're so grateful to have worked with Mayor O'Connell, Kristin Wilson, Bob Mendez, the Finance Department, and others to create housing investments for Year One that are a little over $45 million. And this just isn't the Housing Division. That's what the Unified Housing Strategy was meant to do, is take things that maybe the Office of Homeless Services is doing and MDHA is doing with Metro Investments, and lay it out and see how well these are going to address our priorities for the year. And this was our first year and our first stab at this. And I think you already heard from Director April Calvin on a couple of her things that we've included. Those are the top two lines on the operating cost for new permanent supportive housing and some rehousing support for households without vouchers. Our specific Housing Division requests are in the blue text. And you can see where we've started to elevate the need for a permanent supportive housing strategic plan that will be developed concurrently and in close partnership with the Office of Homeless Services, MDHA, the Homelessness Planning Council. But there has to be one agency that oversees the contract and the deliverables, and that's through our office. Supporting the eviction right to counsel is folded in our, it was in our budget modification request, but I believe that there are going to be some reallocated American Rescue Plan Act dollars. So even though it may not show up in the operating budget, it is still moving forward, and we're excited to support that. We have a new line item for anti-displacement initiatives. While the Barnes Fund does have several partners that are focused in on housing preservation, this is living outside of the Barnes Fund, so we can have a nimble and more responsive tool to help people stay in their homes, whether it's emergency repairs for older adults that are suddenly facing an emergency. But our Barnes Fund partners, they're not necessarily focused on that. How can we deliver quickly and more responsibly? It includes $16 million for the Barnes Fund. I do want to highlight that last year in the operating budget, the allocation was $6 million. So this is $10 million more than the Barnes Fund from last year. It's traditionally been, or historically been supplemented by either surplus funds or ARPA funds. And so this is one of the highest levels of the Barnes Fund coming out of the operating budget. ARPA funds and surplus funds are not available this year. We're adding underwriting services. This is really critical to make sure that we are really investing what we should be investing and getting the bang for our buck. And so having underwriting services at our disposal are critical. We have, and we're showing the impact of our abatement programs. We've never really shown it this way, but tax abatements, even though they don't show up as a line item in the operating budget, these are, they do impact the operating budget because these aren't revenues the city collects, but these are helping to make affordable housing projects happen. We really won't have low-income housing tax credit projects without that abatement. And then continued support for our housing dashboard. We are asking for three new staff for the Housing Division, which are going to be really critical for that local capacity. And then in a 4% budget request for grants management technology. So our total request for the Housing Division's a little over $24 million, but it's all part of that $45.7 million for our Year One funding priorities. And that doesn't mean we're not working on other things in the UHS throughout the year. There's a lot of programmatic and policy changes the UHS is recommending that we'll be tracking toward. We're also going to be still looking at what other new tools and funding opportunities we can explore and bring to our city. And every year, this might look a little different depending on what's happening at the federal level and what we need to absorb and address in housing. Thanks, Lucy.
So I just want to take a moment to remark on how challenging it is to pioneer new programs. And that's what the Housing Team has done over the last, you've been at this now for three years, three years, with the support of this administration and the previous one, as well as this body. But they're pioneers, in a sense, because they're having to build programs, test them. And I just want to acknowledge that it's a lot of work, but I'm incredibly proud of this team and their contributions. They push the other sections in the Planning Department in ways that I think are very productive. And so I really appreciate your support. Very quickly, looking up into the upcoming year, we're working hard on integrating the Historic Zoning Team to the department. They've already participated in some strategic work planning sessions. And then we have a middle management coaching that we work on to help growing departments and teams work together. And they've already, several members have been working with us on that. I've committed to updating the Functional Preservation Plan, which would be part of, I think, how we think about Nashville next. But also, and exciting, I'm going to jump down and say, there's an ecological study that we are jump-starting. And so I see the Preservation Plan and the Ecological Study as being very foundational. A lot of folks think about zoning and land use as growth management, but it's also protecting resources that we care about. So it's both. And so I see those as being very complimentary. Going back up, sorry, I'm doing this in reverse a little bit. We're continuing to build that Metro Property Special Projects Team. We are excited to work with our colleagues in other departments and the Mayor's Office and you on CHIME implementation. And we're really looking forward to thinking about how land use will integrate well with our transportation strategies. And then, as the Mayor mentioned, in his State of Metro, a Nashville Next Update to really elevate where we are today and solidify our priorities. And then certainly, implementation of housing and infrastructure in UHS. And so that's just a snapshot. I'm sure there'll be a lot of other things that we're doing. But I really thank you for your time today and look forward to answering any questions that you have.
Thank you, Director. Thank you all so much for your extensive presentation. It's very exciting to hear about the great things that our city is doing when it comes to housing and affordable housing. I have a few questions that I will kick us off with, and then I will go to Planning Chair Gamble, followed by Vice Chair Toomes of the Budget Committee, and then Council Lady Allen, and then Council Lady Sora, and then Council Member Cortez. I almost called you Council Lady, my bad. Council Member Cortez. And also, thank you for lifting up CHIME, which, for the viewing audience, that is choose how you move. So if anyone was tuning in and wondered what that CHIME initiative was. My first question was, you mentioned a public survey link that you all are using to get feedback. For anyone that is viewing, where can they find that link? It was on one of the slides, but I didn't see the actual link.
It is Nashville.gov/UHS.
Thank you, Nashville.gov/UHS. Thank you so much. Last year, you all mentioned that the Mayor did an executive order. I believe that may have been Executive Order 50, but forgive me if I was wrong on that. And one of the things that it talked about was metro-owned property. And I know for the last year or two, the council has been requesting a list of metro public-owned property. So I wanted to touch base on that to find out if that's already been sent out to the council or where are we on creating that list?
With the executive order for the special projects, and that is what, who Lucy mentioned is now being led by Bergen Dawson, I think you joined us in August, has been working on some of the projects. But I believe General Services has the full list. We have identified in the Unified Housing Strategy and Strategy in Action 15, a list of potential sites that we've identified for further exploration for affordable housing development or co-location or other opportunities.
Thank you so very much. And I know that these are mentioned in the Unified Housing Strategy, but just for more clarification, this is something that I've received a lot of questions about. Can you speak to the plan to use public land for affordable housing, as well as social housing? Could you speak to how that is incorporated in the UHS or the Unified Housing Strategy?
Yes, there are threads, but also specific actions that call on how Metro and anything we do, whether it's through the use of our land, through any of our tools and incentives, should prioritize long-term or permanent affordability. So whether that's we're investing in something that is property we don't own, but we have money in it, or if it's on property that we own, we will look at, first of all, it's important to understand what should be programmed. Historically, at least my experience with how we've made tax delinquent properties available for the Barnes Fund, while we've received some good results, we haven't been intentional about the programming. So we want to make sure that we understand what should be on that site based on what's happening in the neighborhood, what's appropriate, what type of tenure, whether it should be rental, whether it should be homeownership, how it should be targeted, how many units. And then from there, also looking at the different mechanisms that can secure that long-term affordability. And we would let our private partners be able to tell us how they're going to achieve that. Some way, it might be a social housing model, a land trust. It could be a ground lease, depending on the type of housing that could be constructed there. But the intent overall is to have that long-term or permanent affordability. You're welcome.
Thank you. And then I just have two more questions, and then I'll kick it over to Chair Gamble. In the, one of the requests that it looks like the Mayor funded was for the Housing Dashboard. And I see we have a request here at $75,000. Can you speak a little bit more to the dashboard? And for anyone who's not familiar, what type of information that is housed on the dashboard? I've received questions about whether or not the dashboard will actually show available properties. And I do not believe that it does, but I don't want to misspeak. So if you could speak to that, it would be helpful.
Our Housing Dashboard currently, we have three tabs. The first tab is really an overview of the state of housing. It's where we are on the growth of, or the increase of, what our housing costs land, what our area median income is, a variety of different housing metrics. We have another tab that shows the performance of the Barnes Fund each year. And it can be sorted many different ways because there's a variety of tables. And then a third tab on other local resources that we've funded. We are always evolving how that's built out, how we can bring in the data, thanks to a resolution and legislation that Council Lady Allen led, of bringing in more and more information. We will also evolve it because each strategy of the Unified Housing Strategy is, has performance metrics. Those performance metrics will live publicly on our dashboard or connected to our dashboard. We do not have the list of available properties. That, as those become available, that would be through a request for proposals or something like that. And I don't think that we've quite gotten to that process yet of how those would be made publicly available through what process. But they would be publicly available once they're ready to be, for a competitive opportunity.
Thank you. Let me, I just want one follow-up on that, and then I'll go on to my last question. Is there a way, I don't know that there is a way, but is there a way for us to have some type of like directory? Like, you know, when someone is facing eviction or whatever, a lot of times constituents will reach out to us and say, you know, we have this emergency situation, like I need housing immediately, or I'm being evicted. And I don't know of like a running list of affordable housing. So many times, we'll kind of ask around to see if anyone knows of anything. But is there a way for us as a city? Like, do we have that information or have access to it?
What we found with the Unified Housing Strategy, one of the themes that was elevated in the community conversations was the difficulty for people facing housing crises to connect to resources or even know what's out there, how to navigate them. There is a specific strategy with actions on around how to do that, how to utilize Hub Nashville and evolve it to be a centralized place, how our team and others can come together and have one central location for all of the information and points of contact. So it's easy wherever someone, whether the entry is at Office of Homeless Services, Metro Social Services, our office, there is an easy way to navigate and understand and get plugged into the right resource. So yes, that is something that's in the Unified Housing Strategy to build out.
Thank you so much. That is very helpful, and I appreciate that. And I would assume we would probably have some type of disclaimer that we are not, we are not speaking to the, we don't want to be liable if someone rents from a property that we listed as affordable, but there turned out to be issues with the property. So I'm sure that that will be vetted through legal.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then my last question was about eviction right to counsel. I see the request was 2.4 million. I did hear you mention it, but my apologies, I missed part of what you stated. It looks like it's not funded in the Mayor's budget. I did think that we had funding for it. It shows submitted on our list, but not funded. So could you speak to if there's any funding for it?
Yes, it will be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act funds instead of through the operating budget.
Okay, thank you. But it will be funded at the full 2.4 million?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so very much. And Chair Gamble, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here, all of you, for being here today. And thank you for your work and being intentional in addressing all aspects of our housing crisis in regards to affordable housing and attainable housing and homeownership. Really appreciate the comprehensiveness of what you all are doing. And we look forward to your presentation, Ms. Hubbard, on Monday. You did a wonderful job presenting the Unified Housing Strategy to the Planning Commission last week. And so I really encourage council members to attend the meeting on Monday for this in-depth presentation on what the strategies are in the Unified Housing Strategy and what the recommendations are. So we look forward to that. My questions revolve, I have two questions. First, in the, I guess, the budget list here, and you mentioned this earlier, Ms. Hubbard, about the financial consulting and underwriting services. And it looks like on our budget sheet that it was submitted, but maybe not in the budget. Is that, were you all able to find that $500,000 in another area as well?
I believe that it's carried in the admin budget.
Okay, okay. That's great. And then there was another one for Communications and Public Outreach Team, which is, will be critical as we're trying to educate and explain to the community the recommendations and zoning map that will come out of the Unified Housing Strategy. It looks like that was also submitted and maybe not funded. So I want to find out if you do have that funding coming in another area and what kind of communication strategies are you all looking at in educating the community about the Housing and Infrastructure Study recommendations moving forward?
Excuse me. Yes, that was a position request that was not funded. And we'll just have to review other strategies to make those communications efforts possible.
So do you think you have funding in your administrative budget or in other areas to address if we're not hiring a person to maybe work with other partners to develop those materials and whatever strategies that you all are looking at for communication?
So, Councilwoman, we have a good platform in terms of engagement within our Advanced Planning Team. While, you know, we
While, you know, we can give you an optimal condition in a budget request, we will work to make this work. We're going to do everything we can to ensure that this body is comfortable with our outreach approach on housing and infrastructure. And, you know, it may be something that is phased and where we are able to work in a hands-on way with the community. So we're going to be flexible and dynamic to what the input that we get. We'll make it work.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You all do a fabulous job and have been doing a great job with the outreach, the meetings across the county. But as we're looking at trying to engage more new residents and younger residents, we hopefully can look at other tools to engage those communities, those demographics, because we can't always reach those folks at the in-person meetings. So looking forward to strategies and things that you have with that and definitely would support any funding mechanisms that you may need in that area.
So we did make an investment in public input that has proven to be a pretty dynamic platform. It allows for translation services. There are folks who are able to post and sort of communicate that way. I feel kind of grandmotherly when I look and see all the new, the new ways that people are giving us feedback. And so we have made some investments that I feel confident are going to help us broaden our reach, but thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gamble. Vice Chair Tooms, you're recognized.
Thank, thank you, Chair. And thank you all for appearing here today and thank you for the work that you do. I do have a couple of questions. One about the Unified Housing Strategy and two about the Barnes Fund. Anti-displacement initiatives, the home repair, helping with codes violations. This is a big issue in my district in helping keep folks in their homes, particularly the elderly. What does that look like? Because I know Rebuilding Together Nashville has been an amazing partner for years and that's a large part of the work that they do. Like how would residents know about this assistance? How would they obtain that assistance?
There are a couple of avenues that we're exploring. One is through a potential partnership with MDHA through their home repair program. But we recently started an informal partnership with our codes department that's connected with our housing response coordinator, who contacts him when they come across a property where someone hasn't been responsive to, you know, a notice or something that the codes department feels like this might be an opportunity for someone to learn about housing. Our team can go and connect with that homeowner. And they've done that in some instances. We haven't had any really funding to support them. But in those conversations have found out they're not even plugged into the tax assistance program or some other programs and connecting them there. So we're already starting that, but we want to scale that more. And then we've also heard from Rebuilding Together, they have some funding to be at Environmental Corps and help intercede there. So bringing all of that together to address these potential issues through codes is something that we're focused on, on this fiscal year.
And you have the staff that will be able to handle that?
Yes.
Okay. With the Barnes funding, two questions. One is how much is currently in the Barnes Fund and the additional 16 million proposed by the mayor? Do you anticipate spending that all in fiscal year '26?
Yes, I believe the portfolio is approaching 180 million total, what's been appropriated for the council. What has happened in the past couple of years, because quite a bit of that has been through surplus funding that we don't get until perhaps March. So we haven't opened up funding rounds until the spring. So usually by the close of a fiscal year, that funding hasn't been allocated yet because we're currently in a funding round and those won't come to council likely until July. With the Barnes Fund this year all being in the operating budget, that allows us to do our funding round sooner in the fiscal year and being able to have that funding awarded prior to the close of the fiscal year.
So even with the 180 million, because of the late funding you're currently in funding rounds, so you anticipate using all of that?
Correct.
Plus the 16?
Yes, so the applications that are just closed that we're evaluating, we had around 39 million available. We had 30 million plus our fund balance, because sometimes projects don't move forward and their funding is, goes back in and we put that back out. We had requests for $79 million for 28 projects. Okay, that's all to you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Now we have Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Allen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Just to circle back to public property, I was at a great forum yesterday that the chamber put on with the Affordable Housing Coalition. And a speaker from Charlotte talked about their successful program using public property through public-private partnerships. So can y'all address how that part fits in and how we can leverage our budget?
And that's what the infill housing strategy and other opportunities that we identify in the using Unified Housing Strategy as well as anything discussed in special projects. I mean, when we're talking about needing to create 20,000 affordable homes over the next 10 years is what's the Unified Housing Strategy, what we have to do to meet our demands. Metro cannot fund this. And so having private partners that really, we don't leverage their funds, we fill in a gap. They're leveraging the bulk of the funds must happen for us to be able to address this at any level. And so using our property to get the right partners to deliver, to meet our priorities, but that can bring that other capital to the table is really necessary for us to really move the needle.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then question on the three positions that says three FTEs are being transferred from the Barnes Fund. And I guess maybe I mistakenly thought that when the Housing Division was started and you had people administering the Barnes Fund, that was coming under planning at that point. Is that not how it has been funded?
It has, they have been funded through the Barnes Fund, but it's largely been through the interest on the fund and not from the actual appropriations that we receive from council. But we have, we are proposing to move them completely into planning's operating budget, but that is in addition to three new positions that are included in the mayor's budget for the Housing Division.
So that will be six people total?
Well, they're on staff. They're just being funded from a different source, really. I mean, it's all really Metro funds, but they're not out of the Barnes Fund really budget to where we look at how much AMI we take out before, how much goes for programs and projects.
Great, so it's all going towards projects, which is great. So does that mean there are now six people total working on Barnes?
No, just three.
Just three.
Just three.
Okay.
But they'll really be, they have trust fund and two of them have trust fund in their titles. The other one was a, is a compliance inspector, which we really need. We also are getting funded for a compliance manager. I mean, when you've got a portfolio of $100 million for one program and then you have others, we need compliance monitors on staff. And so having them part of the operating budget allows them also to be engaged across Housing Division work and be more collaborative in that space. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. And next we have Councilmember Soror, you're recognized.
Guess what I'm going to talk about? Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to start with eviction right to council because it's the song that I've been singing for the last three years. And colleagues, if you missed the stout report that shows the impact of that program on how much money we're saving and people we're helping, I will ask that you please go look at it. It's very critical. And I want to thank Director Hubbard because it's a meeting of the mind when we're trying to figure out how do we continue this program and where does it sit? The Leguere Team Celestrate Housing, and when I met and talked to her, she's like, oh, where are they thinking about that? And so thank you for that. And now the stout report did say that for that program to be fully funded, to have the impact that we want, we're looking at about a nine million request. I know you and I had some conversation about that. What is your, what is your take on that? Is that something that your department hope to build up to that at some point?
As that program transitions to the Housing Division, of course, we'll be working alongside Mary Jo and Wade, who've been really working on this program since it started. And we've already engaged in some initial conversations with the partners of that program, is what are the metrics that they're doing? Who are they touching? How will it be expanded? That's the first thing we need to understand before we really scale it up to nine million. But again, if we're looking at budget priorities from the Unified Housing Strategy, that's got to sit in with everything else and how we request funding. And this is also a good space for philanthropic and matching opportunities from other organizations, because frankly, there might be some things through this program that Metro can't fund that they can fundraise through to further their work.
Thank you. Thank you. And I do want to, since we're talking about it, I think I should take the opportunity to thank Leguere and Hispanic Bar and all the partners that brought this forward. So thank you. The next question is on that anti-displacement initiatives. I understand it's for repairs and codes and things like that. But one of the concern with the T C program that I've always had is that sometimes we don't get to people until they get to the point of being evicted. Would this anti-displacement include rental assistance or is it just repairs and stuff? Because if we can get to where we're not at that critical point that they're about to go to court and the artist is getting them, if there's any way we can help. So does that fall under the anti-displacement or it does not?
This is focused on homeowners in this version of it, but that will be something that we'll look at. Things that we have implemented in recent rounds of the Barnes Fund is asking or requiring the applicants to tell us how, what their processes are, how they would mitigate, how they would connect people to resources before they get to that point of eviction, as well as what other services they may partner with if it's economic related. Of course, if there's an egregious violation of a lease, that's very different than what we're talking about here. So there are other policy things that we are already working toward in the programs that we fund, but then we can look at what other supports and safety nets can be in place through other resources.
Thank you. My next question is on the, on your funding request here. I know that part of what your department does, the budget equity tool, is the youth and the community empowerment. And I see here that you have a 75,000 request for the Civic Design Center for program with MMPS Middle School. I know it's not funded. Does that mean that that program is not continuing? Is this an additional funding being requested or this is all that it is?
That was a request for additional funding to improve the program. The program will still be funded at the $125,000 level that it was funded at prior to this year.
Thank you. And then same line of questioning with the request for the, it says there's a FTU being requested for plan review, especially with land development. And this particularly is about housing and infrastructure recommendation. Every time we talk about zoning and things and people come to say, don't build it, it's always about you're not looking at the infrastructure. I hear infrastructure, housing in the same sentence all the time. And so this look at something that is really needed to review that infrastructure. Again, is this in addition to what you're already doing? Is this a new thing? Is this a requirement that you think will move you forward?
So I don't want to get too far out into our June recommendations, but I'll give you a preview that one of the things that we would like to put before this body to consider is our changes to the bulk standards that we think will be more complementary to existing Nashville neighborhoods, as expressed in the heights, the setbacks and the like. And so it means a more careful review of vertical development in our base zoning districts, similar to the way that we would look at SPs. Well, maybe not to that level of work. But if this body agrees with planning, that that is an important way of supporting more density because it is more physically complementary to lots of different kinds of neighborhoods in the city, then we are going to need additional plan review staff, both at planning or at codes, to do that work. I didn't, I put that on the table because I wanted the mayor's office and this body to sort of have an early view of what it might mean to look at housing in a different way, right from a staffing perspective. But I didn't push it because we haven't brought the recommendations to council. But if council does end up approving some of the new zoning districts that we recommend with increased standards on the design side, then I'm absolutely going to be saying at that time, we need additional resourcing to make sure that that happens. But that conversation's going to happen in June, so I'm willing to wait until the next budget year to come forward. I don't want to get out in front of you either, right? You may say that doesn't matter.
No, no, it does.
But in my, in my view, a lot of folks in the city push back on density for many different kinds of reasons, but one of them is because it doesn't feel recognizable to them. And there are ways that we can address that through our zoning code. And I'm one who would prefer, SPs have an important function, but I would like the code itself to be healed so that all of the residential development that we're doing is appropriate for its context. And we don't have to just have SPs to do that, but that will take a different kind of review work. So thank you for the question.
I'm eager for that. I don't do zoning, so I don't get a lot of, but I get a lot of the emails. And I think for somebody like me, when planning and council members are at odds, trying to figure out what's going, and residents, I think so, that's why for me that jumps out. And you do need to do that. We do need to fix that. We do need to have housing. We do need to have density, but how do we do all of that in a good way that does not, you know, that everybody can get behind, I guess. So I'm eager to listen to that conversation. And my last question for you is about the language access. I think you talk a lot about it and I think it's very critical. And I'll keep saying that as a member of the immigrant community, we cannot have services and expect everybody to be served equally if people don't have access to it or they don't know how to access it. And so could you, is that something that you plan to continue to do and you do have the funding for?
Yes, so I already mentioned the platform that we're using, a public engagement platform. There are a lot of language translation services through that. And then we're taking a very specific approach in sort of ensuring that our forms and processes are translated. We're starting with Spanish now at the front counter, the kind of customer service, building that out, and we want to keep going. So we want to make sure that we're being responsive to those needs. George, do you have anything on whether, we do have the resourcing to do that today, correct?
Yes, we do have the, we do have the resources to continue that program, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you, Councilmember Soror. Councilmember Court says you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all for being here. I do want to say your staff is fantastic and every time I've had a project come through district, they've been amazing partners in making sure every project is resident-first. So thank you for that. Quick question. In regard to the year one funding for the Unified Housing Plan, is that 24 million that's going to hit the operating budget? Is that going to be recurring? Can we expect that to be recurring?
Every year, we're going to evaluate the performance of what's funded, also of what's happening in our ecosystem around housing. For example, this time next year, we may see a dramatic reduction in federal funds and there might be some new initiatives that need to be moved forward in place of. It depends on how, how big the budget is and how much we can put toward housing, but a lot of that's going to be a rebalancing based on where we are year to year.
Thank you for that. I love how you said earlier, they're all urgent, but they can't all be priorities. And you made a great point. Let's say, gosh darn it, we wake up tomorrow, we have a $150 million hole we have to fill. What would be, what would be the priorities of year one if we were trying to stitch things together?
We have to keep people in their homes.
Thank you. That was very direct. Thank you for that.
Thank you, colleagues. Do we have anyone else? Okay, great. I have two more questions and then we can wrap it up. And I apologize for not sharing this with you all before, so I don't know if y'all have actually seen this or not, but I will make sure to get this to you all. But as we were speaking, I recall that there is a community initiative that people in the community, some Nashville residents have reached out to some council members, asking about creating a Nashville Community Housing Fund. So I don't know if you all are familiar with this request yet, but I will make sure that you all get a copy of it. But in essence, it's requesting a $540,000 allocation to fund the creation of a Nashville Community Housing Fund, which will be a publicly financed, community governed, financially self-sustaining fund for building high-quality, permanent, affordable, mixed-income, city-owned housing. housing for low-income Nashvilleians. And just very briefly, what the request is, is that the government would issue $100 million in bonds to finance the fund, which will provide low-interest construction loans to public interest-aligned developer partners to construct high-quality, mixed-income housing that would include both market rate and deeply affordable units, made possible through cross-subsidized financing model. And it would be an independent entity to operate in a formal partnership with Metro Government. So I wanted to ask about that and realizing you all may not have seen that, so I don't want to put you on the spot as to like, is that something that can or cannot be done? But one question that we get a lot as council members is can we use bonds to create affordable housing for our city? Is that something that we're already doing? Is that in the Unified Housing Strategy? We get that question a lot. So I wanted to know if you all could briefly speak to that. And again, you may not be prepared to speak to this particular request or proposal, but if you could speak to for the sake of our constituents, so that they could kind of get an idea of if that's something that can or cannot be done?
Thank you, Chair. The bond conversation elevates itself pretty regularly with very many different proposals. I'm happy to defer to Director, Finance Director Reed to discuss where we, how we're approaching the bond conversation. The Unified Housing Strategy does lift up different tools that we need to explore. Again, the fiscal and legal constraints, I'll defer to the finance and legal teams as well as how to really, I think some of the intent is to create properties that are community governed. We, through existing tools, have funded things like housing cooperatives that are democratically or are community or resident governed. And so those are actually models that we're looking to prioritize in some of our existing tools. But if I may, ask Director Reed to weigh in on the bond conversation.
Thank you, Director Reed. You're recognized.
Hello? Okay. Janine Reed, Director of Finance. Thank you so much for the question and for sending that my way. We have some discussions that are going on. It is difficult to do like GO bonds for something that is affordable housing, because we don't generally own the affordable housing. There was some state legislation that was passed last year that would allow some bonds through the IDB. We are in the process of having some discussions with planning, but it is in the very, very early stages.
Thank you so much for that. And I wanted to give you all the opportunity to kind of speak to that, because that is a question that council members get very frequently. And I think it's important that we allow the public to kind of hear some of those answers. Also, wanted to acknowledge that you all have the task, which is a very difficult task, but you all have to prioritize, you know, all of the options and research what options are available. And sometimes we as council members will have ideas that we think are a great idea, but they may not align with the priority of the department based on what you all have determined needs to be the priority. And same thing with community members will sometimes bring requests. So not opining on whether or not this should be a priority at this point in time, but I just wanted to give you all the opportunity to speak to it and so that individuals can hear about it. So with that, I don't see any other questions. So thank you all so much for your service to our city and for what you do, and we appreciate your time. And we will call up the Arts Commission for our final hearing of the day.